If you ask staff, you can get it. I just wanted to let people know about that.
Okay, thank you. So, going right into the draft North Glendale Community Plan and related entitlements, including alternative for Foothill Boulevard zoning. This is continued from August 17, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. Who's going first? Laura?
Yes. Chairmanly members of the commission, we have an overview PowerPoint. What we want to do is tell you the differences in the documents that we've made since the last time you saw them on August 17. As you recall from the earlier meeting, we had recommendations that came not only from the Planning Commission, but also from the Design Review Boards, from the Transportation and Parking Commission, and also from the Parks Department and Historic Preservation Commission. So, we wanted to include, whoops, wanted to write an update on that. If this will work. Is it frozen?
Sure looks like it.
There we go. Okay, try this again. Okay, this is the North Glendale Community Plan area. It's essentially the areas north of Montecito Park and Spar Heights in the Glendale portion of La Crisena Valley. And this is an overview of the entitlements that you're going to be looking at tonight. We have general plan amendments to the different elements of the general plan. We've included minor amendments to the circulation element, to the recreation element, historic preservation element, and the land use element. Those are in your packet. We also have the community plan. Again, the community plan is organized into five different chapters. I'll go through the changes that we've included in those. The changes are included in your packet in the staff report. We also included the historic context last time. You consider that really as a separate document. The historic context is an appendix to the community plan. And then, we also have supporting documents. You have comprehensive design guidelines. Those are standalone document. If they're adopted, they would be effective within the North Glendale area, but eventually we would like to extend that citywide. We also have a variety of zoning code text and map amendments that are included in your packet, and I'll go over those as part of the staff report. And we also have, as part of our zoning code text amendments, a proposed fence overlay zone, that's new. And we also have the CH zone, Commercial Hillside Zone, that's associated with Foothill. I'd like to go over what we've done in Chapter Three, Principles. As part of that, we've made amendments throughout the document. It is, again, I won't go over everything that's in the staff report, but some of the main highlights that we've done are provide more orientation between our general citywide principles and specifics in North Glendale. We've added specific references to the community. Our map amendments, there were comments earlier that sometimes our maps didn't exactly match the text, so we've rectified that. Particularly with the mobility plan, there's a lot of concern with will our mobility map match the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan and the Bicycle Master Plan? Both of, the Bicycle Master Plan is currently being drafted. At this point, it does, and our intent is that our mobility maps will match the ultimate bike master plan that's being drafted. We've also made a lot of connections between Chapter Three, the Principles, and the neighborhoods in Chapter Four, and some of our overall city policy framework in Chapter Five. And then, there were also a variety of typos that we've corrected to in Chapter Three. Chapter Four Places, you'll see a substantial reorganization. The context hasn't, or the content hasn't changed, but what we've tried to do is reduce the volume. That was one of the comments that we had heard before is that it was hard to read because of the organization. So, our attempt was to fix that, the organization, so it's easier to read, easier to find things. We also looked at the different neighborhoods and clarified between Foothill Main Street and Suburban Corridor. We also have a differentiation between Montrose and Spar Heights. We combine the commercial districts and the residential neighborhoods. So, the Montrose Spar Heights Commercial District is one section, and then the Spar Heights Residential is a different one. Throughout the document, in the neighborhoods in Chapter Four, we've provided a consistent outline. We'll have the vision first, then we talk about public infrastructure, then talk about design guidelines applicable to the neighborhoods. And again, that was to try and reduce some of the redundancy and to tighten it up so all areas would be the same. And again, these are the places, these are the different areas that we have identified in the community plan, the seven areas. One of the issues that we heard is that for the vision for Foothill, that buildings should follow topography. We did add this exhibit. We thought this was really a key concept for why the commercial hillside zoning would be different than our other commercial zones in the city. And we did add that. This picture is part of the description for Foothill. And we still have the remaining issue of height. What should the height be? I know from the letters that you've received, you have a variety of height options. Previously, we looked at a 35-foot, we looked at a 50-foot, and we looked at a combination of 35 and 50 feet. At your last meeting, you gave us direction to study a 42-foot height limit, and so we've added that as well into your staff report. The staff report itself really concentrates on looking at the 35-foot height limit, the 42-foot height limit, and the 35- and 50-foot limit. And we didn't spend much time on the 50-foot height limit, basically because we didn't hear a lot of information in support of that, either from the advisory. We had some people on the advisory committee who were supportive of it, but then they also supported other height limits, including 42 and 35. So, we did not provide, the staff report does not include additional information on the 50-foot. How a building height is measured, I think this is really key to understanding how Glendale's heights are different than perhaps some of our neighboring jurisdictions. We measure from the lowest point where the building comes out of the ground to the highest point on the building. We do not measure from grade on Foothill, just to clarify. So, again, the lowest point of the building, in this case, it happens to be on Foothill to the height of the building. But then, on the south side, you could have a building that's substantially below the level of Foothill where the height begins for measurement. Yet, if you look at, the overall building is approximately 36 feet tall, but when you look at the height measured from Foothill, it appears to be 18 feet. And the same thing here, you have a building that appears to be eight feet, single story from Foothill, yet the way Glendale measures height, it's actually a 23-foot tall building because there's a story below the level of Foothill. As part of our proposal for all the different options for commercial hillside, we are including retaining walls in the, as part of the zoning. So, right now, we don't have a limit on the height of retaining walls on commercial buildings. Their building can be quite taller because we weren't regulating the height of the retaining walls. And again, unlimited height. And we saw a photo from the last, at the last meeting, where somebody actually built a pad area, they had a 22-foot high wall, and then they built a building on top of that. So, the height would not be measured from the retaining wall, it's measured from above the 22-foot high. So, you actually have a lot of land form alteration that has a lot of impact on neighboring developments, neighboring uses, which isn't really calculated into the overall height. Our proposal now is to include the, any kind of retaining walls in the overall restrictions in the zone. This is particularly important on the south side of Foothill, where you would need to have a retaining wall if you were going to build the level of the land up to the level of Foothill Boulevard. Under our proposed standards, we're looking to have a total of 10-foot maximum retained. And that would be for the north and the south. We also heard that there is a desire to have a variety of wall standards. So, it's not only do you have retaining walls, but then you want a variety of materials and want to have them landscaped. And so, this is just as an example that you can have a 10-foot retained, and you can also have a boundary wall, but you can also separate them and landscape them and have a variety of materials to reduce the visual impact. Our current height has a 50-foot height limit on Foothill. And again, we don't have a restriction on the height of retaining walls. And so, this would be with our new retaining wall restrictions, even though, let me go back, even though we allow 50 feet, even if you kept the 50 feet the way our code is right now, and you just put in the retaining wall limits, you would still have a height reduction in what the overall building could be. Then, when you have a height limit of 35 feet, and you take in our new retaining wall restrictions, again, it further lowers the height of the building as you would view it from Foothill And this is with a 42-foot option. One of the questions that came out is, what's the difference between 42 and 50 feet? Well, the idea was that if it was 50 feet, you could have an extra floor. The question was, well, if it's a 42-foot height limit, would you be able to add an extra floor on the south side? And the answer is sometimes. But overall, even with a 42-foot height, you would have a substantial, you would have a substandard height for your third floor in general. However, we do have some examples of existing structures where potentially a 42-foot height limit would allow you to add a third floor, but generally, that may not be the case. And again, this is the 35- and 50-foot option. Under this, the majority of the building would be 35 feet over, however, you could have a portion that would be up to 50 feet on the front half of the building for a maximum of 30 percent. This is example of Foothill Boulevard zoning under the 35-50 where you have a break in the building. There was a question of what that would look like, and this is an example of what we're proposing. This would be essentially for those larger properties that have more frontage, where you would be able to put in the 50-foot, and also have sufficient depth, because you still need to satisfy setback requirements. And this is an example of what the different heights would be. If it were the 35-50, you could have a portion up to 50 feet tall. This also shows what a 42-foot height limit would look like and a 35. And as you can see, there's the existing building. This happens to be the Jay's Maintenance on the corner of Dunsmore and Foothill. And that's the rear of the exact same building, approximately 23 feet tall. And this just shows that if it's a 30-foot height limit, then that building would not be able to add an additional story. Whereas, if it was a 42-foot limit, there's a potential that it could. Then, on the north side, we have just tires. Again, what would it mean if we have a 35-foot limit, a 42, and a 50? Well, with a 42, they may or may not be able to add a second story. A 50-foot, they could, an additional story. And here's an example of what a 35-foot would look like on the north side, with a 42, and with a 50, and with the 35-50 split. An issue came up at our last meeting of really what would a cross-section look like along Foothill, so we provided this as an example. And this would be the 35-50 example, a cross-section on the south and then on the north. The height, under this example, the 35-50, as it's proposed right now, puts the height along Foothill Boulevard. And that, again, that's only if a building went up to 50. If it was 35 feet, you wouldn't see that. It's only if they take advantage of the additional height option, and those would be the larger properties. And again, it wouldn't be the entire length of the property, it would be up to 30 percent of the front portion of the lot, of the building, rather. We have recommendations that were given to the commission, again, from the Parks and Recreation Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, Transportation and Parking Commission, and the Joint Design Review Boards. They urged adoption of the community plan, and the Design Review Board did spend quite a lot of time looking at the architectural design guidelines as well as the zoning options. They did recommend approval of the comprehensive design guidelines, and they recommended approval of the 35-50 combination. As far as the zoning goes, as part of our proposal, we were looking at extending the Montrose Shopping Park. At the last meeting, we were talking about extending the shopping park on the north and the south sides, and would go at least to Orange Dale on the north side, and then to the Trader Joe's site on the south side. We heard, based on our public notice that we sent out, we discovered that there actually is a commercial building here, and the property owner asked to be excluded because he doesn't see retail use for his property, the first floor. So, if it were changed to the CR, or CR zone, commercial uses would be prohibited on the first floor. He would have a non-conforming use and would be allowed to continue, but his concern is that, well, right now, he's consistent with the zoning and would rather remain that way. So, as recommended by the Planning Commission at the last meeting, we excluded this north section here from any changes. So, this would remain exactly as it is, and it would only be the south side of Honolulu, between Las Palmas and the end of the Montrose Shopping Park and the Trader Joe's site that would be changed to the CR zone, which is the same zone for Montrose Shopping Park. We also have a proposal along Spar Heights to change the zoning. Right now, we have C3-1 zone, which allows up to 50 feet in height. This is the exact same zone that occurs right now on Foothill Boulevard. And staff is proposing to create a new zone, a C3-4 height district. Actually, it's not a new zone, it's a new height district, which would decrease the allowable height from 50 feet to 35 feet. These homes have the same elevation and are directly adjacent to single-family, or the single-family is directly adjacent to the commercial. And one question that did come up is, why would we recommend approval of a 35 in this area and not necessarily recommend approval of a 35 on Foothill? Well, right now, we're not recommending any height on Foothill, we've given you options, but we do see a difference in that. Foothill, as we've heard repeatedly from the community, is the main commercial spine of the valley. And so, we felt if we were going to have additional commercial activity, it should be on Foothill, and that's why we were not necessarily recommending a change to the height of buildings on Foothill. But that is why we are recommending change in this area. And we also have a proposal, this is a staff proposal, this did not come from the advisory committee. We're looking at increases in height in Indian Springs area from 35 feet to 45 feet. Presently, this is a C2-1 zone, that is a 35-foot zone. On the south side, we have a C3-1. This is, again, same zoning as Foothill. This is a 50-foot height district that's in this area with C3. The difference between C3 and C2 zoning is essentially auto uses. C3 is a little more intensive, allows more uses. So, at this point, we were not proposing any changes to the uses in the C2 zone, but we were looking at increasing the height to District Two, C2 District Two, which would bring the height up to 45 feet. Then, your height on the south side goes up to 50 feet here, and your height in this area would be 45 feet.
And that would apply to all C2 zones?
That would apply to just this area.
Glendale?
This would apply just in this area that we're showing, where we would propose that it be C2-2 instead of C2-1. It would be an increase in, it would be an increase in the height.
And I'm just sorry, is that a new zoning designation?
That would be a new, the seat, that would be, well, the seat, it's an existing use in terms of the height district, because we do have C2-2, which is already part of our code. It would be a new designation in this area, because right now, it's C2-1 in this area. The height district is 1 in this area, and we would be looking at increasing the height district to 2, which would give you an additional 10 feet in height in this area.
So, you'd change this zoning designation?
We would change.
To meet the 45-foot as opposed to the 35?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Because I sent you an email, I was trying to clarify that.
Yeah, that, our intention was to increase this area by 10 feet in height. And again, the idea was to bring it closer in height to what we have on the south side, which is 50 feet.
While we are on the trail of asking questions, couple of slides, you made a reference to, and I remembered particularly that office building, if the zoning was changed, it would have created some issues for them between Las Palmas and Orange, that the north part that you have changed and left it the way it is. Are there any other properties, just office buildings in there, that perhaps the owners don't know about what is happening and how that would affect their properties?
Not in the area that we're changing.
Commissioners, can we hold our questions till the end of the presentation?
Sure.
Thank you.
And we also have comprehensive design guidelines, which are in your packet, and we're recommending approval of those. Again, the purpose is to look at predictability and good design, and make sure that our design guidelines allow for buildings that are appropriate to the neighborhood. And I would also add that we want to make sure that our zoning is consistent with the design guidelines in the area. In terms of organization, we did add hillside residential standards to the design guidelines. They were essentially the city's existing hillside design guidelines, they are now incorporated. You may have noticed that difference in there. We said we would do that at the last meeting, and so they are included in your packet. The only changes we did make to those design guidelines is we know that the city has changed zoning standards in the past, so those sections where we knew there were inconsistencies, we did not include them in your packet. And we're not including them in the proposal. So, overall, staff's recommendations. We're recommending approval of the general plan amendment to the selected elements that we've included in your packet. Again, that's the, we have landscape amendment, or a land use amendment, circulation element amendments, amendments to the recreation element, and to the historic preservation element. Generally, those amendments are dealing with allowing for a community plan to occur, with the exception of the land use element. And the land use element, we actually have some specific maps that we're looking at amending. I know they're in your packet, I won't go through those, but essentially, they follow the zoning we had talked about in previous meetings, and general plan amendments we talked about in previous meetings. We also have a circulation element amendment, as we've also discussed, that deals with allowing for complete streets. That's the state requirement, so we've added that as part of that, this amendment. We have the North Glendale Community Plan, we're recommending approval of that document. Then, we have zoning text amendments. We have a commercial hillside zone. Again, the major issue in commercial hillside zones, as we've heard from the public and as staff sees it, is essentially height. We've had agreement on the other issues of setbacks, retaining wall heights, landscaping, parking. The issue that remains outstanding is heights. We have provided four different options. We have, again, the 35, we have a 42-foot option, and we have the 50-foot option, and then we have a combination of 35 and 50. As along with the zoning text amendments, we also have the fence overlay zone, that would be a new overlay, that would be a new overlay zone. Similar to where we have a new commercial hillside zone, we would have a new fence overlay zone. Just also to let you know, we have zoning map amendments. Again, we have the areas I just went over, we have some on Foothill, we went over more in-depth last time on Foothill. There's some minor changes to make sure that property that has split zoning now, part commercial, part residential, would have a consistent zone. And we did add one property since the last meeting. There was one that was Aratu Restaurant. You may recall, at the last meeting, we had a request come in from a representative from that property, and we heard from one member of the commission who suggested we added that to the amendment, so we did. That is in your packet. It's added to the amendment for the zoning as well as for the general plan. Then, we have the Montrose. That would be the CR, change to CR on the south side of the Montrose Shopping Park. We have the Spar Height Zone zoning map change, that would be the 35 feet along the west side of Ocean View. And then, we have the Indian Springs, that would be increasing the height 10 feet to C2-2 Zone along the north side of Verdugo Boulevard. And then, we also have the comprehensive design guidelines. I know that's a lot of information to provide. I was trying to make it easier for you. I did include a draft motion. It repeats what's actually in the recommendation on your staff report, to help you organize your deliberations to make sure we don't forget a point. And that concludes staff's presentation. We're all available here to answer any questions you may have. And I, sorry, I didn't forget, we do have an environmental document that is included within your packet. It's still out for public review, so any comments you have, we will be including in the environmental document that would ultimately go to City Council.
So, I guess.
We're open for questions, yes.
Yeah, I guess the way you broke it up, we could potentially also take these separate, separate items, right?
And again, I know it's a lot of information, but the reason, the reason we did this and to give you all the information is because in the past, we've heard that it isn't always clear what the intentions of the city are when things are piecemealed. And so, our goal was to give you a complete package. And I know we've said that before, we've told the same thing to the community and the advisory committee. We didn't want there to be surprises, and so that's why we've included all of it here. It doesn't mean you need to recommend all of it tonight or have it all go at once, but we wanted to make sure that you had a complete view of what it was that we're proposing.
I see that Ms. Landrigan has a lot of purple stickers on her command cards.
I took one off. Got one answer.
So, before I go to Commissioner Landrigan, do you have any questions, other commissioners?
I'll go later.
Then, I'd like to hear from the public. We have requests to speak here from Sharon Ragavachary.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sharon Ragavachary. I live in the unincorporated portion of La Crisena. I'm currently on the Steering Committee of the Crisena Valley Community Association. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I was a member of the Crisena Valley Town Council for seven years, co-chair of the Crisena, or of the Foothill Design Committee that co-authored the Community Standards District for Foothill Boulevard. I'd like to just make a few points about our CSD that are relevant to the height for your portion of La Crisena. Two of our three districts, unlike what it says in your report, two of the three districts, we have our one mile divided into three, two of the three districts have a 35-foot height limit. The only one that has a 42-foot height limit is 42-foot, is the eastern portion, which includes our Ralph Shopping Center. But the 42-foot height limit is a little bit miscon, is a little bit deceiving, because if it's a 42-foot flat roof, all of our buildings on Foothill Boulevard must have roof forms or roofs on three sides of the building. So, if it's a flat roof, it still has to have roof forms. That means the flat roof portion would actually be lower, depending on how large the roof form is. So, none of our buildings really ever will reach 42 feet on the roof, the roof forms could be 42 feet. When they're used, the height, obviously, like I say, will be less than the 42 feet. We took into consideration the impact that the tall buildings have against the residential buildings, on the south side particularly. Buildings on the south side of Foothill that adjoin a residential parcel, the maximum height is established in a different way. It's established by a 45-degree projection, measured from six feet above grade to the top of the building. So, that means that if they have a second floor, it's going to be stepped back, it's not going to be a square building, a rectangular building, I should say. If they're on the north side, it's, the 45-degree projection is measured from grade, not six feet up from grade. We also changed the maximum heights from the zoning basis to an area-specific basis. So, in East Town, all of the zones are 42. Midtown and West Town, all of the zones are 35. This changed our C3s down from 13 times the buildable height, down to 35 in two of the zones, or in two of the districts. That's a significant change. We had unanimous support of the County Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. We had, we worked for seven years on this plan. The County Planning Commission actually put our, we have lots of standards in there, it's not just height, obviously, but they put our project, our CSD out there as the one for other incorporated areas to follow. They hailed it unanimously, supported it, and gave it high praise. We had unanimous support from the, from the public and from the Chamber of Commerce. I'm a little confused why they're proposing 42 now, when our Glendale, where we are adjacent to Glendale are 35. And, as I said, they're not going to be 42 when you talk about the roof forms. We did have no one speak at either the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors opposing our project, opposing the CSD. So, I ask that, for continuity and compatibility, that you also choose the 35-foot height limit. We look at the valley as one, we don't often see the border down Pennsylvania, so the residents see La Crisena as one piece, and I think we would like to see more of a continuity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sherri Stubbs.
I sent an email, I think over the weekend, I hope you all got it. But just to follow up, we do need continuity between the jurisdictions, that's key. 35 feet on the east, unincorporated, 33 feet height is on the Summerton Hunga side on the west. Foothill Boulevard must be considered as unique due to the terrain in the mountainous area. Thus, guidelines and standards must be adopted to which, which are specific to this unique status. The desires of the community should be the focus. The community's desire is for a 35-foot height limit. This height limit can easily be achieved, still following topography on Foothill, by simply leveling the land. Measuring height from the lowest point should not be the sole measurement standard. Again, the standard must be flexible to adapt to the Foothill geography and in conjunction with the Advisory Committee's vision statement. The Advisory Committee should also be included, and I've mentioned this before, in the adoption of any documents implementing the plan, as no document thus far contains such specifics. It's just too general, and there's a whole sheet of implementation items that have to be adopted yet, that the Advisory Committee has had no say in, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sharon Weisman. Next, we have Sharon Weisman.
Susan Bullen. I also sent you an email over the weekend. I hope you had a chance to tour our fine city, as I suggested. If not, I would just like to reiterate, I am in support of the 35-foot height limit. And if you looked at those pictures, you could see the potential of what a 50-foot or even a 42-foot would block out our beautiful mountains. It became very clear by looking at those drawings. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I guess, Mrs. Weisman Snyder, so she will forfeit her...
Let's go to another meeting.
I guess, yeah. A stand of the public speaking request form. We're open for questions. Ms. Landrigan.
They're not as bad, although there are like a lot of these purple ones here. But I do have a couple of questions, and I have a couple of comments. My biggest question, I think, is, and I'll give you some of these, some of these are typos. Some of them are not significant in terms of what we're discussing tonight. But the other, there is one significant here. Duke Magin's not part of this area, is it? The North Glendale. It's not included in it.
Yeah, our intent was to include it up there with the Markridge area.
So it is included?
Yeah, we revised some of the maps. It may not be actually included as a neighborhood, but our discussion was included.
Why are the Verdugo Woodlands, the area that was purchased recently, not part of it, even though that is, is that, it's an open space in Parkland? That was a question I had on the parks and recreation. It was a huge purchase from the Greggs by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and the city.
Yeah, we would be including Oakmont as part of the next community plan when we do it.
All right. So even though it's adjacent to it... See, I was thinking, since Duke Magin was adjacent and not included, I was just curious.
Yeah, because most of the Oakwood neighborhood, or Oakmont neighborhoods, rather, would be included with the next community plan. So our intent was to include that open spaces as part of that one.
I have, on, we have one definition of site planning, which is extremely comprehensive, and that's in the design guidelines. However, when you use it within the actual North Glendale Community Plan, you leave out what I think is kind of important, and that is, you indicate the components of site development, and I'll give you, it's page 42, under design guidelines, site planning. And you say, "It involves a careful analysis of the opportunities and constraints of the site. The components of site development extend beyond building placement and configuration, including topography, surrounding area, retaining walls, landscape design, hardscape considerations, and parking." And yet, in the original one, you include existing site features, such as mature trees and drainage patterns, that I think should be added every time you use that, because that is essential to good site planning. It seems to just leave it into the built environment and not into the natural environment that is there. So I would, I would recommend that every place where we have site planning in the different neighborhoods, that that be added into it. On page 24, how come that be? Maybe I'm going backwards. Of, under chapter 3.6, mobility, you indicate that the preservation of open space has advantages of limiting expense for infrastructure expansion and allows the city to provide more efficient services. It also preserves natural beauty, allows for preservation of habitats, protects areas for groundwater recharge, and is consistent with the city growth policy, as identified in section 3.2. I think it would be really important to add, and it supports the North Glendale vision statement, which is to preserve the mountains. So we're just whipping through these. If we're looking at chapter 4.2B, Foothill Boulevard, I have a question about awnings, because this is about awnings on page 58, and it says, "If awnings are proposed, they should coordinate with the building, generally avoiding long and continuous treatments." And I'm curious, because you allow them to intrude into the public open space in some, but it doesn't have that called out in the CH. And I was curious as to why not? And we can bring that up shortly, the CH zone.
The CH zone doesn't have a street setback, so you're left with the building code allowing awnings into the public right-of-way. The zoning code doesn't prohibit them.
But the building code does.
Building code allows whatever it allows in the public right-of-way, in terms of marquees and awnings.
So it doesn't need to be called out?
No.
All right.
If there were, that would only be important if there were an actual zoning setback.
All right.
Street setback.
That was a good question there. I have another one on, again, in 4.3A, Verdugo City Gateways, page 65, roof forms. Roof forms should be consistent with the building style. I think it would be prudent to add, and should facilitate screening mechanical equipment. And I have that noted several places as well. Most of these are duplications, because we have... On attachment E, which is attachment 2, and it has attachment E after attachment 2. I'm just reading this. Land use element amendment to implement the North Glendale Community Plan. And it shows the proposals. It talks about campus. I amend the following text of page 15. "This category includes parks, schools, and such specialized commercial activities. Cemeteries are also included. Specialized use areas may be appropriate for campus land use design." And then, in the mixed-use development, it indicates campus. Does campus include, we don't have it defined anywhere.
Can you tell us exactly where it is?
Yeah, I'm having difficulty finding it.
Attachment E. It's in attachment 2. You're welcome. Does campus include, like, a building park campus? I mean, it's kind of a loosely used word and can be applied loosely. I'd be curious.
Right. We'll need to add a definition of it, because our intent was, when you have developments such as our campus that we're here right now and the community, our civic center, you have schools that have a campus-like development. We might have hospitals that have a similar type of development. Our intent was to include that as a land use type. We may not, other than maybe the hospital that's up there, I can't think of one that we would actually have in this community plan, but absolutely, we will have them in future community plans. I don't know if Alan has anything additional to add, but I, it was intentional to talk about a campus. We just didn't define it.
I think the reason it falls under both the mixed-use development and under the specialized districts, those are existing categories in the land use element. And a campus, to a certain extent, may be a design issue, kind of design type, similar to the way we have village centers and town centers, both apply to commercial areas.
Right.
We don't know in the future whether we would see campuses on mixed-use land that's currently zoned for mixed use or for specialized use. So it could be both, like, the hospitals, but it could also be other property. Obviously, the community college would probably fall under a campus when we approach that subject. So it's intended to be kind of a...
Vague.
Well, it's not intended to be vague. It's intended to be a placeholder...
A placeholder.
A placeholder for future ideas, as Laura said. Probably only the existing hospital in North Glendale would fall under a campus designation.
Would you...
Need to define it more clearly.
...limit it to a size? I mean, I mean, I'm just curious as to, because I think it can have, you know, vast interpretation.
At this point, we hadn't considered that, no.
Well, I would think it would help to think about that. And let's see, I'll go through very quickly. Most of these are just minor concerns, of which some were answered in the presentation. Thank you. Let's go to chapter one of the comprehensive design guidelines. On page five, under what is currently on the site and when it was built, which is 1.61, it's again in site planning. I really think that there, it doesn't, you're telling people what they should look for. And it doesn't mention that you should look at the existing site, existing drainage patterns, and existing trees in it. And I think that should be the first one there, and then you can go with the built environment. Sorry about that. And then, continuing on chapter two, under 12, again, the site planning has the same North Glendale, page 42, recommendation. And then, a building location under one, consider relationship to adjacent buildings, topographies, existing mature trees, and sunlight. On page 14, under chapter two, page 14E4, use of indigenous trees, and it is encouraged. I think it would be really nice to reference the city's indigenous tree ordinance there. And those are, those are the comments I have on everything as a whole. I do have, I do want to say that one of the startling elements, and I wrote, Ms. Stotler several emails, every one of these letters sort of indicates that we would be increasing the size of the height to 50, and that is not the case. The existing by right height of these properties is 50 feet. So that was the concern I have, is that there seems to be a misunderstanding of the non-property owners, is that the 50-foot height limit is going to be an increase, and it's not. It's existing. And so when I get these letters, I'm very concerned that somehow or another, that information was not received. And I, I know that the recommendations here are to create a pattern that is appropriate for this area, and it's based upon information that was sent out to the property owners and to the advisory committee. But to me, I, I find it really startling that none of the property owners have raised a big concern about losing what I consider to be an economic value of being able to build to that. I mean, that's what your, the price of your property is based upon, your build-out. So that if we diminish this height, which is a form of downzoning and is actually probably better for the community as a whole, and we all understand that we subjugate certain individual rights for the community as a whole when we do planning, that that will change the economic property tax, property roll taxes to the city in a time that's economically depressed. And I am not here going to propose one way or the other, but to me, that seems to be something that, I find it really startling that, I mean, if it was my property and I was going to be asked to not be able to develop, you know, to that max, I would be concerned. So that was why I sent you several emails. But I know that the city has made an outreach to all of the property owners, and also, I understand that being able to develop your property doesn't mean that when you go through a design review board, that there's certainty in it. And so my concern and my hope is that if this is changed, is that the community will support buildings to decide to not hold them hostage to other, other concerns that aren't expressed in here. That's really, you know, and I, I do own property, and I barely can afford to pay for it these days, as we all know. It is important to me that my, my property was downzoned, and I have less ability to expand, and it's a very small property. That's, that's an issue. If, I mean, it is the United States of America, and you have certain rights. So that's the concern that I have here with the changes in the heights. And it's a big concern for me. So I'm just stating that, that I understand the reason, I understand the pattern, I understand the urban...
Appeal.
Appeal, thank you, that we are going for, but I am concerned because of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Landrigan. Good points made. Commissioner?
I think right now.
Right now?
What?
Story? Have anything to add?
Nothing yet.
There was something, residents had brought up that the standards, the Community Standards District was at 35 feet, but in the document, it said both the 35 and the 42-foot requirements were both consistent with some parts of it. And what we heard was just the 35 was, how is, how are both consistent? Both standards consistent with it?
Yeah, the county community standards district uses the 35-foot height limit in one of the three districts, 42 in another. And where they're next to residential, it's the six feet plus 45-degree angle, basically. So you have all three of those standards in the three, in the three districts. But they have a lot of design characteristics built in, which are more, even though it's zoning, to me, they're more design guidelines than they are actual zoning. So I don't know how successful they're going to be in actually implementing them when they get a real-world project. But yeah, the, those, all three of those numbers exist, the 35-foot height limit, the 42, and then you go up from the back property line up six feet, and then you have a 45-degree angle to infinity. So the deeper your lot, the higher your building's going to be able to be built in that 45-degree standard.
But they don't have anything like the 35 and the 50?
No, they don't.
That's not...
Again, they have a whole bunch of, as was mentioned, other factors about architectural design and roof forms. Again, some of it pretty complicated. To me, more design guidelines than zoning. Don't know how that's going to work when they get a real project. So here, that's my own opinion about that.
So today, we're to really decide on, actually make the recommendation of which height limitation that we'll recommend to the council on 40... height limitation that we'll recommend to the council on Foothill Boulevard. So I guess, you know, we need, I mean, and then I guess the rest of the package with the comments here, we can make the recommendation. So I think maybe if you have any more questions about some of the studies that was done on the height limitations, you know, let's ask that now.
If I may, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'd like to address both items that were raised by the commission. Number one was the startling statement that Ms. Landrigan recognized in the letters. I, you know, I cannot speak for the community, but based on the interactions we've had, I don't think there is a question that the community understands that the current zoning does allow up to 50 feet. However, at the same time, the community understands that our design review process, which by the way, the county does not have the benefit of a design review process, that is why I share Mr. Kraus's, the particular lack of confidence in the county's design guideline manner zoning language to be implemented, because we have the bodies of the design review process that will implement your direction as it's adopted. So going back to what Ms. Landrigan said, I think the community understands that that's the zoning. However, the community also understands that the design review process is a discretionary review process that allows the design review authority to reduce the height to a limit that's less than the zoning, that what's allowed in the zoning code. Our hope is that at the end of this process, similar to your hope, Ms. Landrigan, that the two are consistent with one another, so that both the community, well, the community, the design review authority, and the staff all understand that what you're, you see in the zoning code is going to be pretty much consistent with the design review board will be seeing. So that said, that takes us to this whole, well, connects to the second point of what they have in the county. I share Mr. Kraus's viewpoint that a lot of it is really design guidelines, and whether or not it can be implemented is, it remains to be seen in the future. Thank you.
Now, the 35 and the 50-foot, or one of the alternatives, is sort of a design guideline, right? I mean, it's like, it's designing by zoning to some extent, right?
It's... Well, you're asking it like a rhetorical question. No, 35 is 35 and 42 is 42.
No, 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 I mean, the 35, the 35-50 footer...
The 35, yes.
Right.
It will be subject, yes, the 35-50 gives some level of play that will eventually be decided at the design review board level. And then I think one of the reasons that staff has bringing this whole other option that goes a little, now you have four options, is that at some point, we are at the mercy of our negotiation with the applicants. And while the 35-50 gives options to play and make room for some adjusting factors in each site, we know that at some point, we'll be in this bargaining table with the applicant who will try to maximize the 50 and minimize the 35. That's why staff would like you to consider going with either 35, or 42, or 50, as opposed to the combination, despite the fact that we think from a planning standpoint, the combo is probably a very good option.
So if I may, the 35-50 hybrid solution, was that recommended by the design review boards?
Yes.
Yes.
And would that have to go now back if we do recommend the 35 or 42?
No, their role was advisory. You are the authority that makes a recommendation for the policy to the city council.
And regardless of whether it was on the south side or the north side, the higher elevation was on the foothill side as opposed to the residential end. Correct?
That's correct.
Commissioner Shitz, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I have a question on that 42-foot study that you've done. I know that your example showed, you know, some of the buildings that you could put additional floor in there, story, you know, without any problem. And then you also mentioned that most of the buildings along Foothill Boulevard would not be able to prop additional story with the 42-foot. Do you know what the proportion of that, or what specific properties that applies
We don't know offhand which properties that applies to. What we found is that the larger sites have a larger range of topography. And so where the building would be coming out of the ground is essentially lower, there's more discrepancy between the foothill boulevard side and the downslope side at the south. We're talking primarily about the south here. And so on those larger sites, there would not be the potential to have a third floor as viewed from foothill boulevard because of the limitations that we're recommending for the retaining walls that would limit you in really remolding the lion form as you could under today's requirements.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Are we ready to deliver, deliberate, make a recommendation?
Yeah, I think we're ready to deliberate.
Who is ready to go first? Okay, Mr. Shitz.
I feel this process has been very rewarding. It's been a long process, and there's been a lot of energy and effort expended by a lot of community members. And it's hard for me to grasp this whole concept of what we're trying to do and how much detail there really needs to be about it. And then even though I was at many of the meetings, to sit here and make a final decision on some of these important issues, because one side of me says if I go by what the vision was of the committee, then I'd go low. Because the people that were involved in the committee, I think preponderance of their desire was to go there, and I understand why. Not only because of what the committee talked about, but what I know about the city myself. And I agree with the intent, what the vision is, what they want to make the city look like. I was kind of surprised that there weren't a lot more people speaking, from what I would see, either the business or development area, to come in and say, whoa, hold on, you can't do that, because then you're going to impact all the things, essentially what Commissioner Landrigan said. I want this, I have this right, I want to do these things, you can't tell me what to do. There wasn't any of that. I don't know what that really means, but it wasn't there. So I guess what I'm leading up to, and trying not to be too wordy, I don't think, I'm not going to make that decision here tonight, because I think what we decide here has important consequences in all walks of life in the city. So I have a preference, but I don't think it's my decision. I think this decision about, at least about the height. The other issues, I understand them, I think the staff did a beautiful job, we've covered so many areas, I commend them for that. But this issue of the height, I think, is so far-reaching. I mean, it's not, it's not going to make or break the city, but it's just, can touch so many lives in so many parts of the city. And there's so much passion about what the whole community wants up there. My recommendation is going to be to let the council decide. And that's not chicken out, it's more to say, they need, they need to know what, they need to make that decision, because I can make my decision, but they need to speak to all their constituents and all the people that they know, and the people that influence them. So I, that's my stand on.
I think we can make the decision. If they don't like it, they can reverse our decision.
That's true, but I don't think it's my decision, I think it's their decision.
What's next? Commissioner Astorian, you to go next?
If you insist. As a whole, if I were to look at the entire North Glendale community plan, it's a really thoughtful, well-put-together document. It's taken you one year, it's taken the community one year with the interaction with the city, planning and so forth, to get to this level. In fact, I remember having attended the first meeting, and then have missed a bunch of it in the middle, and then when I was appointed, starting attending the meetings. I have no problems with any, any one vision, placeholder, or platform in this plan, with the exception of the height limit with Foothill Boulevard. In my opinion, if we are to go, to be taking a 35-foot flat height limit and stick with it, it would be tremendously cumbersome for the business community. Now, to respond to my fellow commissioner, Mr. Shitz, the business silence really is not a silence. I've heard from the business people, about hundreds in droves, but I've heard from some. They have issues. But here is the problem, the nuance here is that these are folks that are doing business in the community. They don't want to be on the bad side or the negative side of the community. So that's why they are reserved. If we think that there are no concerns amongst them, I think we would be fooling ourselves. There are concerns. Is the current height the answer? My opinion is not. I took the contrarian position last time. What I suggested, the director didn't like, I don't think too many people liked, but what I suggested was something that had a payoff for the community, and that was called a great design. I said to myself, what is it, or how is it that this community, or a developer, or a property owner can achieve what it wants, and yet there is a payoff in great design for the community? That's why I was leaning in the direction of having, say, 35, 37, 38, and then be able to make up a difference to get to that 45, 46. In my opinion, 50, I'm totally against it, so let me put it out, put it out right now, 45, 46 level. So you have property owners that are not robbed from their right of being able to develop, and yet you have, there is something, a payoff in that, and the payoff is great design. To me, for the community, or a or two members of the community, to turn around and say, well, you have the variances in the code, let's leave it at 35, and they can come out and argue till they turn blue through the variance system, that's really cumbersome. The variance system is not designed to design a project. A hearing officer is not trained, maybe sometimes, to design a project. That's the job of folks like Mr. Loomis in the design studio. So that's why I was suggesting that whether it is 35, and really, it is irrelevant if it's 35, or 38, or 42 at this point. If you have enough cushion in there, not to be used as a tool to beat up on people that want to develop, and I want to be very clear about this thing, and I commend you for your remarks, Ms. Landrigan, about taking the developer or the business owner as hostage. If you apply that properly, that was, there was a lot of success with that in the downtown Glendale, I understand it's, there are differences. But if you were to apply that properly, I think this is where the community will have what they want, and Foothill Boulevard property owners will have what they want. And in my opinion, you're going to give birth to better design. To come out and say that our roof lines have to detract from heights and so forth, as in page 41 of our CDG, and then say we're only limited to 35 feet, that's the, I mean, that's the absolute opposite of great design and great community planning on Foothill. So I am leaning for a hybrid, not the 50-feet slash 35. And I am, as a bottom, as a floor, I am seriously looking anywhere between 37 to 42 plus incentives. Those are my thoughts. And I would be happy to recommend that to the city council.
I have to agree, I have to completely agree with Mr. Astorian, up to the point of doing the different design recommendations, the height recommendations. I think this is a really good document, that there's been a lot of time and energy put into it from staff and all the community members, too. And there's a good reason why we, why they've gone through the design guidelines and put such strict, and such, made the design guidelines so much better. And we have a good process now, we have a design process for these buildings. And it's supposed to discourage the type of building that we've seen in the last couple years in your area. And some of those buildings have been up to 50 feet, and I think that those were used as examples for a lot of the letters that have been sent to us. So even if we did just continue with the 50-foot limit right now, we're discouraging a lot of the design, bad design that has happened with that. I have to agree that the business silence is not because they don't want to speak up about this, but most likely is because they probably don't want a backlash for them for good reason. Now, there's obviously other methods that they can communicate with us, too, sometimes. And we did hear from some of them last, at the last meeting, although not a whole bunch. I think given those ideas, and since this is considered a downzoning, and given the real good work put into the design guidelines we have now, the 42-foot limit does seem reasonable. And as a, as a, just a consistent number, it seems reasonable as well, because we don't, not to put too much variation and not to make it too confusing. And then also, as far as requiring the 35-foot and the 50-foot option, it seems almost like we're designing by zoning, and that's probably not what we want, since we already do have a very good design review process that we can all comment on and the community can get involved with as well. And now we have guidelines that can improve that design review process much better. And I think that's the point of it, and that's the purpose. So I'm just, I would be willing to recommend that 42-foot. And if there's more community input later, and businesses want to get involved, then that can definitely change later. So I'm okay doing that, and I would be okay recommending that.
Thank you, Commissioner Shitz. Commissioner Landrigan?
Well, I agree that the existing 50-foot is not creating the kind of community that we would like on Foothill. I think with the change in the retaining wall element, that the 42 is something I feel more comfortable with. I, in my heart, I would like to go with the 35, because I think you're going to get a smaller community that is far more pedestrian-friendly. But I do feel for the people who own the property and the consequences of that. So for me, I would be able to support the 42 and recommend that to the council. However, on north of Verdugo, which is another area, I have concerns about wanting it to be 45 and the assumption to build up that area. You know, those of us who shop there, I would have a hard time with large buildings up to 45 feet there. So I mean, that's more than 42 that is going to be on Foothill, which is a heavy commercial district. I'm, my concern with changing that, just so that it matches across the street, which has not been developed to that height yet, is encouraging that height development, which is something I feel very uncomfortable about. It's a very beautiful area right now, it's set back from the road. It was one of the reasons I bought my house in this neighborhood, and I think that it would change the character of that area immensely. And even if you use the hospital as an example, and you look across over in La Cañada, the medical center there, it's a totally different feel than Glendale is, and I don't want to be La Cañada. So, and I don't know if the council wants to, but my recommendation is that north of Verdugo not be changed to 45. And an ocean view. I understand the proximity to... I understand the proximity to the, um, neighborhood. That's another, changing it from 50-foot to 35-foot. I mean, these are, these are big changes. I mean, these are big changes in the value of your property and your ability to sell your property for what, when you originally invested in it. I, I do have those concerns. However, that is an area where I think that the, it would be very hard for anybody to convincingly build a 50-foot building there with the design review. And I think to allow a property owner's certainty in building is what we're looking for here. And I think that that is one in which somebody could build to 35 feet comfortably and not have the community really, you know, hamstring that kind of development. Those are my thoughts and, uh, to pass on to the council, and, you know, I feel comfortable with 42. I, I feel more comfortable with 35 if I really thought that, um, you know, that it wasn't going to have be such an economic hardship at this time. 35 for Ocean View and no change on, uh, North of Verdugo.
Thank you, Ms. Landrigan.
I want to echo the fellow commissioners on the, really, the, you know, job well done on the preparing this report. As far as the, the height recommendations for other areas, um, you know, I, I have no issues with, with it, but I do want to echo what Commissioner Landrigan is saying about the Verdugo area, in that you are increasing the, um, the height on the north side to match the, you know, southern side. I do not know if that's, that's really a viable, uh, valid, uh, reason, really, uh, to, to do that. And I want to go one step further, and that is that if we are, uh, recommending looking at 42-foot as a, you know, we're recommending at the, on the Foothill Boulevard, why not limit, um, you know, both sides of the Verdugo to the 42-limit as well? And that, that, that's my thought. Now, limiting ourselves to 35 feet along Foothill Boulevard, I think what we're going to end up is we're going to really end up with a matchbox type of design with, uh, no innovations. Really, the designers need to have some freedom to, to have some architectural features in their design, as Commissioner Astorian noted, too. And I agree with that. And, you know, in the mock-up drawing where the 50-foot height seems very massive, so I am leaning towards going with the 42-foot, but, you know, I want to extend a little bit more and just, if we're going to go with the 42-foot, uh, you know, why not consider looking at other areas at 42-foot as well? I'd not like the 35-foot to 50-foot hybrid, because I think that is just, uh, complicated things invite, uh, more variances to, to really play with those numbers. So, um, as Ms. Sahagani said, I don't think that's the, that's the viable option. Uh, I think we, we need to have a, uh, you know, consistent height limit. So, that's my thought in that, um, you know, if any of the commissioners want to.
I just want to add one thing. This is a very rich document. I mean, it is a great read. I mean, you could find out so much about the history of the Crescenta Valley and all of the neighborhoods, and I really enjoyed reading it. And I really think that it's going to be an extremely useful and well earmarked document. And I just want to commend staff and the community on putting together such a, a very rich document.
If I may, Ms. Toddler, the, the purpose of the North Verdugo side, um, height increase to 45, was it because of the, the, the hospital and perhaps potential medical uses and so forth, that you want to be able to accommodate that? Is that what it was?
Yes, that was part of it, a large part of it. When we looked at some of the comments that we received from the residents in the area, what we heard was, we don't want any more commercial and, and office buildings, put large medical office buildings put on Foothill. We heard that loud and clear. We also heard that there may be a medical need, because we do have a hospital up there, and that hospitals do need medical office buildings to be supportive. So we thought, well, we have a large employer up there on the hospital, what can we do to balance this need? So there wouldn't be necessarily pressure to build new commercial or medical office buildings on Foothill, and we said, well, we have Verdugo Road right there. Um, we know people are unhappy with, there, there is a new medical office building on Broadview that people are very unhappy with. Um, we've heard that they're unhappy with the design of it, and they're also unhappy with the height of it. Whether it's the height or the design, we've heard concerns, but we know there definitely is demand there for medical office, because they've been building it. So when we looked at the North Verdugo Road, we thought, well, here's large parcels, quick access to the freeway, they're very accessible, they could, they're actually in a perfect location to support the hospital. We also have industrial zoning on the south side in that area, so you can have labs and other things that are supportive of a hospital. And the subdivision characteristics of those lots, they have broad front edges, they're deep, they can have capacity to have, uh, buildings that could support the hospital. So we thought, well, it would be better to have a height limit than on both sides of the street that would be similar, and you have buildings or, or sites that potentially would be, uh, better fit for commercial office or a medical office building than Foothill Boulevard. So that was our idea when we looked at it, of where possibly could we accommodate future growth medical office buildings for the hospital? That seemed a logical extension. I know we've heard, we didn't necessarily bring it up today, but we heard a lot of discussions also from the advisory committee, as well as the public, about traffic in residential neighborhoods, particularly up there along Foothill. And one of the concerns with some of the medical, the office buildings that exist up there now has been traffic. And so that was another reason we thought, well, if we put larger buildings that perhaps are large traffic generators close to the freeway, we would reduce the amount of potential traffic in residential neighborhoods. So I would, that's not quite in a nutshell, but that was our reasoning for recommending an increase in height of 10 feet on the north side of Verdugo Road.
But primarily for medical use, is what your concern was?
We were looking for medical, absolutely. Our thought was, how can we support the hospital? And that is our major employer in the area. What kind of zoning do we need to provide for economic development so we can have a job base there?
Thank you.
Now, with all the commissioners' comments here, are you looking for us to just make motion to, to, you know, recommend this, the whole plan with all the comments, individual comments, or are you looking for us to kind of vote on certain numbers?
If I may answer that question, we would recommend that you make a recommendation on all of the topics, and we, with all due respect to Commissioner Sheets, we also recommend that you make a recommendation on the height. The reason that we think the Planning Commission is the appropriate commission to discuss and make a recommendation on the height is that we have heard the variety of the viewpoints that we have heard from the community tonight from the commission. I think you are well representing the community, and I think you have well represented the, the battle that everybody has, has experienced in presenting this. I think the council would appreciate getting a well-vetted recommendation from the Planning Commission based on the, all of the topics that you have mentioned. We do stress the importance of giving certainty, uh, to the applicants and to the community by establishing a certain height limit, so that the design review process will not be the battleground for deciding what the development would be.
Well, I have a motion here that really covers all the, uh, you know, the, I guess, subjects that we discussed here. So, other than the fact that, you know, this one does not have the, the height limit, if we add that on there as a recommendation, that's what you're looking for. Okay.
Yes, we have, when, just to explain the motion that I prepared, um, the idea was I broke it into the elements that we would need to, we would need to look at approvals. So we need to look at general plan amendments. We, again, would look at the North Glendale Community Plan, which has become part of the general plan. I have as a separate issue height on Foothill. Obviously, it's related to the commercial hillside zone that we're proposing, but I think you may want to have a separate discussion just on the height. I also have zoning text amendments, and I broke it down into the four different ones that we're proposing. Again, commercial hillside being the main one, but then we also have a new height district four that we would be preparing, proposing modifications to the zoning land use charts to allow bank and financial institutions, kind of a detail within, that would be within the Montrose Shopping Park area. We went over that the last meeting. Um, we also have a fence overlay zone that we would be including in the zoning. And then we have draft zoning map amendments, and we have several areas that we've outlined within the zoning maps. We have a couple, these are essentially maps or map changes to correct split zoning, where we have a zoning that, in most cases, we have zoning that's partially commercial and partially residential, and we're looking to make them either all residential or all zoning, or all commercial. It's basically alignment adjustments. And then, um, the other one we have is the comprehensive design guidelines. That would be part of our recommendation. I do have a correction on that. I know originally we were looking at having the design guidelines apply only within the North Glendale area, and I believe now that we're looking at having those guidelines apply citywide if they're actually adopted at this time.
Yes, Ms. Landrigan.
On this motion that you so generously put together, you don't have the Verdugo, the North of Verdugo.
Indian Hills.
Indian Hills. Do I see it?
Didn't have to leave it out. It should be in the map amendments.
So would you like for us to go one item by item to, uh, to get this approved, or is that what we're looking for?
Well, you may want to, yeah, you may want to go through each one. Does anybody have a concern with the general plan amendments and then go through each item? That might be the easiest way.
An answer to Commissioner Landrigan's comment, yes, it does appear to have been left out.
Yeah, thank you.
So it would be a change from C-2-1 to C-2-2.
And that would be under draft zoning map amendments?
Yes.
If I may, before you deliberate on the, on the motion, I think we should probably have the record indicate that Commissioner Sion left the hearing room approximately 10 minutes ago, so.
Uh, thank you. So noted. So I'm ready to entertain a motion, item by item. Would like to.
Well, I will introduce the general plan amendments. That upon consideration of the North Glendale Community Plan and related general plan amendments, the comments made by me, changes, uh, that we recommend approval to the City Council. That's only the general plan amendments. Can we do this motion at a time?
Yes, that's what we're looking for. Second, support.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Astorian.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sheets.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye. The vote of 4-2-0, uh, the general plan amendments has been recommended to the council. Next, North Glendale Community Plan.
I think it's appropriate for Commissioner Sheets to do this one, since he's been involved with the, with the community plan and the advisory board.
I move that upon consideration of the North Glendale Community Plan and related, well, the North Glendale Plan, uh, and after reviewing records and files, that, that we recommend this to the City, City Council.
Okay, second, support.
With the changes that were, uh, very well put by Commissioner Landrigan.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Astorian.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sheets.
Aye.
Chairperson Lee.
Aye. The vote of 4-2-0, North Glendale Community Plan has been recommended to the council. Next item, height on Foothill.
Can I, may I take the zoning text amendment out of the order? I hereby move that the zoning text amendment with the applicable changes recommended by this body in this, in this meeting, um, be recommend, with the all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said, in time of the Planning Commission, I recommend approval of the zoning text, text amendment and, and recommendation to the City Council.
A second.
I have a clarification on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we, you know, several of us said different things here, so I think we need to be a little bit more specific. I guess Commissioner Landrigan did talk about Verdugo, uh, area, north and, north side, and then I even talked about south side of that.
Is that, that's not the C-3?
No, the north side comes into the zoning map amendment.
Next one.
Exactly.
Okay. What about C-3 height district? Isn't that part of the?
You can take it separate.
Okay, all right.
And where is that again?
Well, you can have.
The C-3 is in Spar Heights?
Yes, C-3 height district four would be Spar Heights. That would be the west side of Ocean View. That would be lowering the height from 50 feet to 35 feet. The modification to the CR zone, that, um, that would be a chart amendment. We also have a fence overlay zone proposal that would be included now, um, as part of the, the change.
But the commercial hillside one is Foothill, CH, right?
The commercial hillside zone is part of the zoning text amendment. It might be, you might want to move approval of everything except for the height limit on that one, because the commercial height zone would also include your set box, that would include your parking. It's all the other issues that are wrapped up into the zone. What I'm hearing is that really height is the, the tipping point on this one, so you may want to recommend approval of everything as part of this motion, except for the height, and take the height separately. But the height would be a CH zone amendment.
Well, we could handle it together, height on Foothill and zoning text amendment.
We could now. Nobody but me commented on the C-3 height.
I believe the chair also commented, uh, because the, the chair.
On Ocean View?
Uh, yes, I think that, I heard the chair recommend 42.
Right.
As opposed to 35 or 45.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Chairman Lee, I thought that you were making reference to Verdugo Road.
So was I.
I thought so, too.
So was I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I was, but at, at the same time, I was kind of, I guess, generalizing that, you know, if we have a maximum height, it should be a consistent throughout.
So then, so then, this motion is going to be with, uh, with, if, if we were to deal with the, the new C-3 height limit from 50 to 42, is that what it's going to be?
That's what, you know, that's why I was, you know, asking this question here, because C-3 now is 50 feet, uh, but if we want to put a height limit on, on that, you know, let's not have a hodgepodge, you know, limit here, but have a consistent height throughout.
You could break that into two discussions as well, because we'd have to create another height district for 42. We have to create, um, different height district for C-2 and C-3, because neither one uses a 42, which we could do, we could do that. And that would affect your mapping as well. So you might want to break that up into the foot, uh, CH discussion, the Foothill height limit, and then see if, uh, there's support for the 42 on Verdugo Boulevard, north and south side of the street, because I think what you were.
Right.
Leaning towards.
Well, on.
Not Ocean View.
And also Ocean View.
West side.
The west side 35 or 42?
You just heard 42.
No, no, you heard from one commissioner.
Right, exactly, right.
Not, not everybody.
So that's why I was just saying, you know, we had all different comments and different views on this here, so, you know, I guess this is.
If I may, just say what we have heard, so that the commission, if you'd like to deliberate more on it, we could hear. I, we've heard that two underlying logics. One is that if on Foothill you're not going over 42 feet, then why go elsewhere in the North Glendale area? That's, that's a good policy discussion. And the second piece is that, uh, what Ms. Landrigan said, that why change the height limit in the north where, where the existing height limit seems to be creating a particular form, and by changing the height limit, you may be encouraging to change the form, why even go there?
there? So there, there are two different pieces that I think create a bookends for a spectrum. Why change it to begin with, and if we change it, why go over 42 feet? That's kind of what I'm hearing. Yeah, and, and as far as the north Verdugo area is concerned, if, and, you know, coming from somebody with business background, this may sound silly, but if it was limited to the medical use, I think I can support the 42 feet. But if it was for any other office, I will not be able to support it. So, I mean, if that's the intention, be able to support our hospital, one of our hospitals, and the burgeoning industries around the medical, then I have no problems with that.
It is really difficult to, once a building is built, to control its future uses.
Yes. Commissioner Shitz, I think it's time for you to now step in and talk about what your preference might be.
I made it pretty clear. I was, I see, I've seen this view, I've seen the spectrum, I've seen us go back and forth. Just the little discussion we just had about making it medical kind of speaks to what I'm talking about. It's not my charge, and maybe in this forum, it's something that I have, I have the right to do, but I think we're making the kind of decision here that has to be made at that, at another level. And even then, it won't be as clear and as specific as we want it to be, because nothing ever is, but this is an important issue, and I won't take a choice on the heights as far as recommending it to the council. I have a preference, but I'd rather just not, in this forum, I'd rather not give a judgment on it. But I clearly understand everybody's point of view and-
Well, Director Higany and Ms. Stotler and staff, I seem to at least have heard three commissioners, including the chair, to have a concurrence on the height limit on Foothill Boulevard.
Yes.
Which was the 42.
So why don't we take that one first?
Okay.
Yeah, here's the problem. One of your commissioners that would agree with you is not no longer here, and I don't know if it's going to be mature, because I, you know, I, in the absence of, well, let me ask you this, we can't deliberate, right? Of course. Let me ask you this. My intellect is tenderized by the lack of attention I'm getting from you on the, on the recommendation that I had with the variable height, with the design incentives and so forth. There is no support for that.
I'll dialogue with you on that. I, I think incentivizing design is a great idea, but I also think it's a, the general type of development that occurs on Foothill is not of the sophistication that that kind of design, I mean, the kind of money that's put into it, it's not the same as it is in a downtown specific plan, where you bargain for setbacks in frontage and open space. And I am not discounting the value of that property, but I'm saying, a lumberyard is not going to do that, a hardware store is not going to do that, but somebody who's going to put offices in there is going to do that. So I see it in terms of a difference in the type of development that is, is typical there. I don't see that that's an appropriate tool that a person would take, that that developer would indulge in. And so it's almost a disincentive to the kind of development that you are hoping for.
If you want to hear from my side, and the reason that I did not elaborate on your comment was that really, you know, the, what is the definition of good design that deserves incentives? Really, you know, it's, it's open to debate, discussion. What you see as a beautifully designed architectural building might be eyesore to me. So in essence, I cannot find consistency to really support that. So I think that's why I kind of generalized it, saying, you know what, if we put a limit there, then, then within the boundary, within the guideline that we set, then, you know, you can have the imaginative, you know, the designs created from that. But I think it is our job to really set that guideline, though.
Mr. Shitz, are you ready to beat up on me, too?
No. I think in its, in its place, it's a great concept, but first, I think it's, in this instance, it would be very subjective. I think it would be a slippery slope, and I think it goes contrary to what the intent was of the committee as far as making the community look and feel a way that they would really like. And I, and I keep reiterating that, reiterating that, because there's a passion behind that, and I feel it, and that's where they want to go, and these are the first major steps that are going to be taken to allow us to start going in that direction. But I, I think it's a great concept, and it's, it's a good offer, it's just that that's the way I feel that, that it would fit and would or would not fit into this, this situation.
Well, for, for lack of support, then it is what it is. In lieu of that, and since you don't have your third commissioner here-
Politics of presence.
I will be, I will be, I will be willing to support the 42 height, 42 feet height limit on Foothill Boulevard, only.
Okay, so I'm ready to entertain the motion.
I will second.
We had, we did have a motion for the text amendments.
We're tabling that.
You're going to table?
Yeah, yeah, right. For right now, we're-
Table that.
Okay.
Along with my self-confidence. It was first, it was first tabled, then tenderized, or was it, or was it the other way around?
Do we need a second for tabling that motion?
No, we'll, we'll come back to it.
You can withdraw that.
Yeah, withdraw that motion.
It's withdrawn.
Okay, so now we're looking at height on Foothill. I'm ready for-
Would you like to make the motion, sir?
It, it would sound odd from somebody that was arguing about incentives, but I will indulge yours.
Upon consideration of the North Glendale Community Plan and related general plan amendments, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said entitlements, the Planning Commission hereby recommends approval of the height on Foothill of 220, 242 feet. And the proposed new CH zoning, is that correct? Did I get all the right things in there?
Yes.
Seeking support?
Unequivocally, yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Astorien.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Shitz. Chairperson Lee.
Aye, with a vote of 3 to 1, the height on Foothill has been recommended at maximum height of 42 feet for new proposed CH zoning. So are we coming back to the zoning text amendments, or are we going to draft zoning amendments?
Let's go to zoning text amendments.
Okay.
The first bullet, commercial hillside CH, already has the 42 in there. Well, I'll give it a try, it can just go down. Upon consideration of the North Glendale Community Plan and related general plan amendments, and after reviewing the records, files, and reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said entitlements, the Planning Commission hereby recommends approval of the zoning text amendments, PZON number 2008-011, including the following, the commercial hillside CH zone proposal with a 42-foot height limit, no change to the C-3 height, modification to CR zone land use charts concerning banks and financial institutions, and a fence overlay zone proposal. That means maintaining the existing height.
That's 50 feet.
That's 50.
That's on Ocean View?
That's 50 feet. It's for clarification.
Again, then that-
The C-3 zone height district three would, or would allow a 35-foot height. Right now, we don't have an option for a 35-foot height in a C-3 zone, so that's what-
That's taking it from 50 to 35?
It allows, district four is 35 feet. Right now, we only have district one that's 50, that's the lowest, so this would create a lower zone.
Okay, so then I'm, I'm going to say-
That's all along Ocean View.
And the new 30, C-3 height district four. As written.
Did you want to include the fence overlay zone proposal?
I did.
Okay.
So this is 35 feet for the west side of Ocean View?
Correct.
Right.
What's the east? Let's find out.
50. It's just adjacent to residential.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Astorien.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Shitz. And Chairperson Lee.
Aye, with a vote of 3 to 1, the zoning text amendment has been recommended. Next, draft zoning map amendments.
Are, are we making any additions to this, or is it reference to the comments made by this body tonight as well?
Well, this is the one where the C-2-1-
C-2-2.
Uh huh.
Would that change, correct? So I'll-
Needs to be added into it, because it's not on that list.
Indian Hills.
What's the proper language for that, Ms. Defoe?
In your draft ordinance, it's section nine, change the height district on the north side of Verdugo Boulevard between Honolulu Avenue and the Eastley City Boundary from C-2-1 zone to C-2-2 zone.
The north side of Honolulu, right?
On the north side of Verdugo Boulevard.
It's actually on attachment six on your staff report.
Right, that's what I was reading from.
Yeah, and it's the last item down, section nine. And the way it's actually written is change the height district on the north side of Verdugo Boulevard between Honolulu Avenue and the Eastley City Boundary from C-2-1 zone to C-2-2 zone, which would increase the maximum allowable height from 35 feet to 45 feet, and is shown on exhibit D. So if you wanted to eliminate that, then you would just take out section nine of the dropped ordinance, and then it would make no changes at all to the height.
Or I think what was, been said was go to 42 feet rather than 45 feet, right?
That is what the discussion has been. Shall we continue that discussion? Shall we have a motion first and a second, and then discussion?
Well, we can have a discussion before we have a motion.
Okay.
So then, with, then, then I guess the 42 feet, again, I'm going back to the medical uses and so forth, and I know we cannot restrict them once they're built, I understand, although they're deferring, right, viewpoints on that. However, so then, as opposed to the 45, now we're talking about 42. A second. What's the significance of that 3 feet, if I may ask? What is it going to achieve by reducing 3 feet? Could it furthermore encumber the design process, or what is it going to be? In your opinion?
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
And let me ask staff this. What is the setback in the C-3?
C-3, there is no setback.
So you would be able to have right up where there's right now, I mean, right now, what you get when you drive in is this vast wonderful view, this is the landscape architect in me, of the valley, and at night, you see all the twinkling lights and all of the window residential. Now, if we approve this where that little Texaco station was torn down, you will have right up against the sidewalk, a 42 or 45, what is that 3-foot difference? Doesn't seem to matter, building that will house and also add to traffic, quite frankly. And maybe it is medical, and maybe it's not. I mean, nothing over there right now is medical, and the one that we do have on Ocean View has not been able to lease out, and it is determined to be medical. Now, it may have other problems, but those are, you know, it's still there, and it was designed as a medical building. 30, what's the difference between 35 and 45 if you do that straight up there? I think it's a big difference, because if you're going 45, you're looking at that freeway ramp from La Cañada that goes onto the two, and what if somebody flies off into that building? Now, we know that only bodies have done that, and I don't mean to be careless and crude, but that is true. I think that the proximity to have that there is not a very good design pattern to put for the entrance to Glendale. And, and we have in here that we want this when you cross over under the freeway, I read it right here in this, that we would like this to be a fabulous grand entry into the city. I don't think that constitutes a grand entry to the city.
Ms. Stotler?
I just wanted to clarify one thing, that I think we're talking about two different zones, because the C-2 zone does have a 5-foot setback, and the C-3 doesn't have a setback. And the reason that we have differences in the height districts is because there are different height districts between C-2 and C-3. So just as a clarification of where did the 45 feet come, come from, in C-2, height district two is 45 feet. We don't have a height district of 42 feet at all. So if we did go with 42 feet, then we would also need to create a new height district for, and that's fine, I just wanted to clarify that, that we would need to create a new height district for C-3 and C-2 if we were going to go with a 42 feet in both along, if you're going to do that along Ocean View or any other thing that's zone C-3, or in any place that's zone C-2.
Well, you know, along the same, then, that process, if you are going to allow, because, you know, southern side is, you know, C-3 zone right now, and, and one of the reasons why we're taking up the 45 feet is to kind of create a similar environment for that, the Verdugo there. If we're not going to go with that, then I think we also need to look at the southern, do we really want 50-foot limitation there?
Good question.
You know, so I think, either way we go, I think we need to really be consistent here, so that's why I brought it, you know, if we're going to go with the 42, 42 here, you know, or if we're going to go 45, since we're 50, then that's fine. But, you know, if, if we're arguing that, you know what, if 50 is a massive, you know, then I think we really need to look at both sides.
Well, you actually said that earlier, that you thought that they should both match, and I heard you say that. My, my understanding, though, is that that 50-foot height starts right by the Burger King and goes west, and so all of that residential is not in the 50-foot height district. So it would, so it doesn't, wouldn't match it until you got to like Marshalls and Burger King. That's where you would start to have the inconsistency. So if you have it further up near really the, you know, the grand entrance to the city of Glendale, you would have residential on one side and this large other, you know, edifice across from it. To me, they, that doesn't match. That's, that's where I'm coming from, not anywhere else. It's that specific site there, and that would be the whole side, so, you know, you aren't exempting one and having half and half. But that's where I see the inconsistency in the 45-foot.
Versus 35.
Versus 35.
Difference is 10 feet. We don't know.
It's 10 feet.
Versus 3 feet.
I can do that, man.
So, so where are we going with this?
Well, let me ask you this. There's a 5-foot setback at the 35, right?
C-2.
At the C-2.
C-2, too.
But if we go to C-3?
There is not.
There's no setback, and it's 10 more feet, so it's even a bigger difference. So it's a big change, it's opposed to, just a height change.
For the sake of consistency, my question was not the 35 to 45, my question was between 42.
45.
Just the 8%. 5%.
42 or 45, both seem-
Wouldn't make any difference.
I'm not, I don't think they would work.
So, so I guess we're all happy with a C-3 zone on the south side, then, I guess?
C-2 right now, C-2-1 as opposed to C-2.
No, I mean, I'm talking about the south. The C-3 on the south side, you said.
The south side.
C-3 on the north side.
Right.
You're happy.
Right, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, we, if you were going to consider changing anything on the south side, we would recommend not to do that tonight, because those properties, especially if we're talking about-
about downzoning, because we have not had any explicit noticing to the property owners that their, their site would be downzoned, therefore. And then, for this, based on the material that staff presented in terms of going for 42 feet, that would add a series of complications that I would think that if you wanted to go that direction, we would really have to bring the item back. If you want to make a decision tonight, we recommend that you either stay with maintaining the current zoning or changing the zoning to 45 feet.
Thank you, Ms. Haganian.
If you see the little drawing up there, there's this big white space in the middle?
Right.
It would stay 35, I guess.
That's La Cañada. That's the city of La Cañada.
And the freeway.
A white space.
And the freeway.
Which is also in La Cañada.
It's huge right now, because there's a freeway.
It's usable property, underneath the freeway. Although you couldn't go very.
Did you make a motion, Commissioner Landrigan?
Um, I didn't. Would you like me to?
Yes. Let's see if we can get support.
All right. Upon consideration of the North Glendale Community Plan and related amendments, et cetera, the Planning Commission hereby recommends approval of zoning map amendments, PZON number 2008-012, as follows: Area 1A zone change as noted, Area 1B zone change as noted, Area 1B zone change, I guess I have to tell you it.
That's where we had the split zoning. The original one didn't include.
To remedy a split zoning on the CH zone for a Ratu restaurant, Area 1C zone change from R12 zone to CH zone, east of Lowell, Area 2 zone change, C21 zone to CR zone on the south side of Honolulu, and no change for the north of Verdugo property.
And did you also want to include the height district change from C3, C31 to C34 on the west side of Ocean View and Spar Heights? And then we also had the Montrose Shopping Park zone changed to CR on the south side to include from Las Palmas to the Trader Joe's site.
Yes, I'm sorry. That wasn't on the cheat sheet. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes. So everything except for Section 9 on this is what I'm proposing. Yes.
Excuse me, as a point of clarification, Ms. Stotler?
Yes.
Did you, I'm looking at Attachment 6, Section 6. I'm not sure if that could call out in your bullet point. Summary, area of west of Lowell.
Right, we have an area east of Lowell and an area west of Lowell. The one of, the area that's west of Lowell is where we have the.
Oh, I see.
There's a.
Okay.
It's a church, did I, sorry, there were a lot of, a lot of bullet points, if I left one out.
Yeah, it was actually combined with a separate bullet point, I just saw it.
So I think we have a motion here to accept all this, except for the, what was discussed on the Section 9, that to be, remain as is. And to include, I guess, that new C3 height District 4, from 50 to 35 feet.
Correct.
Okay. Seeking support. Okay, we have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Astorien.
Aye.
Commissioner Shitz.
Aye.
And Chairperson Lee.
Aye, with a vote of 3 to 1, we have, we're recommending draft zoning map amendments, as the motion says, as a motion proposed by.
All of the changes.
Commissioner Landrigan, with all the changes. Okay. The next one, comprehensive design guidelines.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the draft comprehensive design guidelines, with small changes as noted.
For use citywide.
And for use citywide.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Astorien.
Yes.
Commissioner Landrigan.
Yes.
Commissioner Shitz.
Aye.
Chairperson Lee.
Aye, with a vote of 4 to 0, the comprehensive design guideline has been recommended to the City Council. I think that concludes our motion and the.
Recommendation.
Recommendations, here. So, next item, not having it, so planning division updates.
I don't have any updates at this time.
I guess we have a meeting this Wednesday, though.
Yes, we do have a meeting this Wednesday, where, hopefully it'll be short. I believe that the three items, you'll need to continue, and one staff is recommending remanding. And then there's also a meeting next Monday, a joint meeting with the Transportation and Planning Commission at 5:00 p.m.?
Um, there's a, there's a meeting at 5:00 p.m. with just the Planning Commission, a special meeting on Monday, the 24th, to look at some development agreements. And then we have a special meeting with the Transportation Parking Commission at 6:00 o'clock. And both of those meetings will be over at the council chambers, not here in the planning hearing room.
Oh, so the, on the Monday meeting?
The Monday meetings will both be held in the council chambers.
The Wednesday meeting is here.
And the Wednesday meeting is here. Yes.
Mr. Astorien. I have a question in the packet for the, for the 18th.
Yes.
The, there was a mention of a parking study that was going to be given to us for a, for a property on San Fernando Road.
Hi. Oh, an appeal?
It's a meeting for the 19th.
Oh, there was an appeal item. I believe that you're going to receive a request that that item be remanded back to the planning hearing officer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comments from commissioners?
I just have a question about the development agreement. So are they not complete? Is that why we're continuing this? Why can we not take them?
They're not complete. Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Comments from commissioners? CNN? So I'm trying to, the motion for, so, so there.